Shrinks or grows? Share what you think about your elected representation. Visit Bridgewater.ca/siz to learn how, or drop off your comments in writing at Town Hall, located at 60 Pleasant Street in Bridgewater.
Thank you so much, everyone.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joe Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, so you don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want with all my business to be.
Every eight years in Nova Scotia, municipalities are required to conduct a municipal boundary review. In Bridgewater, that means taking a close look at the number of elected officials on Bridgewater Town Council. Should the number of town councillors stay the same, shrink, or grow? Share what you think about your elected representation. Visit Bridgewater.ca/siz to learn how, or drop off your comments in writing at Town Hall, located at 60 Pleasant Street in Bridgewater.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joe Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently...
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this special council meeting, Bridgewater Town Council, to order. We have one item on the agenda to discuss 102, 108 Aberdeen, and 14 Hurdle Drive. So thanks for everyone coming in. Thank you for staff for being here. Just before we jump into this, I do just want to mention one thing. I think many of us have received a lot of emails or calls regarding Drummond Hills. I know I've received calls from residents and staff. There's been a change in ownership there and some information that perhaps the assisted living suites are being phased out. So at this point, I just want to relay to people that we haven't spoken to the new owner. We don't have any information. We don't have any details to know what's happening, when it's happening. So I guess I just, at this point, want to advise the public that staff will reach out to the owner of the building and will get some information. So we don't really have anything we can comment on because we don't know what their plans are. I know that a lot of people are kind of scared because you've got 23 units there that are assisted living. There are no other assisted living options in Lumbur County, so if someone needs that kind of unit, there's nowhere else for them to go. So if this is what's happening, then it is a concern. But at this point, again, we haven't talked to the owner, so we don't really have any more information. So I just wanted to kind of note that publicly, and staff will do what staff does best, which is gather information and figure it out and work with the owner and relay it to council. But at this point, we don't really have much else to say. So I just kind of want to do that. And without further ado, we'll move down to our agenda, and Ms. Childs is going to run us through document 22-115A. Thank you.
Thank you. So a development agreement for 102, 108 Aberdeen Road and 14 Hurdle Drive was approved by council on December 13, 2021, and that was to permit the use of a multi-unit residential development up to a maximum of 35 dwelling units as a collective development on a single lot where three out of the 35 units must be affordable housing. There's currently a single unit dwelling on the lot, and the applicant has proposed to construct a 34-unit building to maximize the permitted density. The applicant is now requesting a text change to remove the words "on a single lot" from the section of the development agreement that outlines the permitted use. The development agreement was written to regulate the use on what was originally three lots, 102 and 108 Aberdeen Road and 14 Hurdle Drive, and 108 Aberdeen Road is the lot with the existing single unit dwelling on it. The development agreement was written with the intention that these three lots would be consolidated into a single lot because the entire area was needed for the number of units the applicant was looking to construct, which was 35. And the consolidation has occurred because it was required in order to complete the development agreement, although registration of the DA hasn't happened yet. The applicant is now intending to subdivide a portion of the current lot around the existing single unit dwelling at 108 Aberdeen Road so that it could be sold separately. The applicant has been under the impression that the subdivision would be possible after the development agreement was in place. However, subdivision isn't currently permitted because of how the development agreement is written and that it specifies that development must be on a single lot. So that's why the applicant is requesting the removal of the phrase "on a single lot." They have stated that having two different asset types, a single family and a multi-unit residential dwelling on the same lot would cause issues with title and financing, so they're requesting this change. So staff are providing council with two different options: to make the text change to the DA and remove "on a single lot" to permit this subdivision, or to not make a text change and require the developer to go through a substantive amendment to the DA if they wanted to subdivide the lot. So if the option to make a text change is chosen, this would enable staff to simply remove that phase from the DA and have it signed and registered. The applicant could then subdivide and sell the lot once the DA is registered. If the option to not change the text is chosen and the applicant decided to go through a substantive amendment, it's more or less a new development agreement process, so it could take approximately six months and would include public participation and staff analysis. It wouldn't take quite as long as a normal DA since the bulk of the analysis would stay the same as what's already been completed, but it would take time to meet legislative timelines and processes. And the developer would also have to update their application because they wouldn't be allowed to construct as many units as permitted through the current DA. And this is because density in this zone is based on lot size, and with a portion of the lot subdivided, the permitted density would be less than it was with the three lots that were initially planned to be combined. So I'm going to go over why there's the option for council to choose between these two options. The permitted use is included as a substantive clause in the DA, and technically this means any changes to it have to be done by a substantive amendment. However, the reason the text change without going through an amendment process is an option, is for three main reasons. So firstly, the removal of the text change wouldn't, or sorry, the removal of the text wouldn't change what the community was consulted on. The development would stay the same and would have the same impact as the current DA, which has already been approved by council. Secondly, it hasn't been executed or registered at the land registration office yet. And thirdly, council approved the DA with a motion that says that council shall enter into the development agreement in a manner similar to the draft development agreement. So this change could be considered as in a manner similar to. So I'm going to go over some things for council to consider when thinking about the options. So the permitted use section of the development agreement was written specifically to include "on a single lot" because, as I said, the number of residential units permitted is based on the area of the property. So to achieve 35 units, the area from all three parcels was required. Based on a plan showing the proposed re-subdivision of 108 Aberdeen Road, had 108 Aberdeen Road not been included in the calculated area at the beginning, the development agreement would only have been able to permit 30 units probably. However, now that the 35 units has been permitted in this area, the proposed text change to the development agreement would not affect the maximum density that is currently permitted. And this is because the development agreement would still be on all of the lots. So even if Aberdeen Road is subdivided, it would cap any density that's shared between 108 Aberdeen Road and the new development of the 34 units, and it would cap it at 35 units. So a change to this text would also not affect servicing requirements since the density wouldn't change. If a text change is to occur and 108 Aberdeen Road is sold, but still under development agreement, there would be development limitations on that parcel, but these would exist whether or not the property is subdivided and sold. The main difference is that the lot would either be owned by the current property owner if it wasn't to be subdivided, or a new owner if it was subdivided and sold. So due to these limitations, it's probable that the current single unit dwelling would stay single unit dwelling in the future. There are two other possible uses, but they aren't probable. So the single unit dwelling that exists now could be converted into a two-unit dwelling. However, it might be unlikely because it would only be possible if the proposed 34-unit apartment building was reduced to 33 units by the property owners because it would have to maintain that 35 unit cap that's outlined in the DA. The single unit dwelling could also be converted to three or four units through site plan approval. However, this is only possible if more than 30% of the ground floor is used for a commercial purpose, and also may be unlikely because, again, the additional units would only be permitted if the proposed apartment building was reduced to either 31 or 32 units to keep it under that 35 unit cap. So although there are commercial uses permitted in the C3 zone as of right, the single unit dwelling couldn't be converted to wholly commercial, nor could commercially added to the single unit dwelling. So as mentioned, these same situations would apply to the single unit dwelling with or without subdivision and new ownership. It's not a subdivision that's causing the limitations. It's the development agreement and the fact that the current single unit dwelling is a legal non-conforming use. The main difference is who owns the property. So if the single unit dwelling at 108 Aberdeen Road is subdivided and sold separately, the development agreement would be represented by two property owners. And separate ownership could create risks where there is a new owner on either lot, but especially 108 Aberdeen Road, because they may not be aware of the registered development agreement and therefore those limitations. However, this is not a scenario that's unique to this situation because any property in town may be burdened by a development agreement, site plan approval, non-conforming status, or restrictive covenants. The onus is on the buyer to understand what limitations may exist beyond the zoning and permitted developments of the land use by law. Related to this, the property owner of the proposed 34-unit dwelling also runs a risk of having any new owner of 108 Aberdeen Road not follow a DA, and therefore, since the DA covers both lots, it wouldn't be being upheld. And so I mentioned the possible uses to 108 Aberdeen Road if the text change occurs and the DA stays in place on both lots, so that probable use would be a single unit dwelling. If a text change is not made and a substantive amendment does occur, it would be to remove 108 Aberdeen Road from the DA, so that property would then fall back to the land use by law. So in this case, 108 Aberdeen Road has more options. It could become wholly commercial as of right. However, no council or public input would be needed for this because it's permitted as of right. It could be converted to two units as of right, and similarly, no council or public input would be required. Could go through a site plan approval to have three or four residential units as long as there's ground floor commercial, and selective public input for this is required. Or it could go through a development agreement and get up to 11 units if they use the affordable housing bonus, and for this, council and public input would be required. So going through a substantive amendment opens things up to a new property owner if it was sold, but also changes what the public and council originally thought would happen with this property through the development agreement. So a legal opinion was provided regarding the two options that have been presented to council, and the legal opinion is that it's understood why either option could be permitted. Overall, it's included as a substantive clause in the DA, where practically there's an understanding why a text change could occur. Our policy looks at the impact to neighbors in the areas and the area and the impact of services, and those wouldn't change with the text change. So therefore, it's being left up to council to determine the direction. So the final thing I wanted to note is that really there are four options that could result from the two options that have been provided to council, and I'll summarize what those would entail. So the first option is going through with the text change to remove "on a single lot", which is requested by the applicant, and this would result in the development agreement still being on both lots, even though 108 Aberdeen could be subdivided and sold. There would be a density cap on the area, 35 units, although if 108 Aberdeen Road had been subdivided before, only 30 units would have been permitted through DA probably. There would be no impact to surrounding neighborhoods compared to what's already permitted by the DA, and also no impact to servicing or traffic compared to what's already permitted by the DA. The new owner of 108 Aberdeen Road may not know property limitations, but again, these would be in place with or without 108 Aberdeen Road on the same lot as the 34-unit building because it is the DA and the legal non-conforming use that creates the limitations, and also limitations exist on many properties in town in different formats. Also, with the text change, it would be an immediate change for the applicant so they could subdivide, sell, and continue with their existing plans. So the second option is not to change the text. There's actually three possibilities resulting from that. The first being no text change, and then the developer would complete a substantive amendment to change the lot area. So this would result in the development agreement only being on the large lot, not 108 Aberdeen Road anymore. The density would no longer be capped on that whole area, so only 30 units would be permitted on the larger lot rather than 35, but could potentially go up to 11 units on 108 Aberdeen Road because it reverts back to the land use by law. There would be no immediate impact to adjacent areas because if they want to substantially add some more density on 108 Aberdeen Road, there would need to be a development agreement or site plan approval. And the applicant, in this case, would need to do a substantive amendment, which I mentioned would potentially take up to six months, require new plans, and... and smaller density, but some of their review of staff would be transferable. The second option is that there would be no text change, plus the proposed development would move along as planned. So, in this case, the development agreement is still in place. But this is probably not a likely option, since the applicant has requested to change it. And thirdly, the option of not changing the text and there being no development at all, because the applicant could choose not to do a substantive amendment, even though it stops them from completing the current proposal. So, council has provided with the two options, to direct staff to remove "on a single lot" from Section 2A of the DA, or to direct staff to not change the text in the DA.
All right, thank you. Let's start with questions. Questions from members of council? Councilor McDonald?
Just want to be sure that I understand correctly. This is a text amendment to this particular DA and does not impact other developments in the future?
That's right. So, I'll use text change rather than amendment, since amendment's a different process. But it is specifically the development agreement that would be in place on that area.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Thorburn?
So, that doesn't affect future use of Lot 108 on Aberdeen?
It does affect future use. There's the limitations that exist with the development agreement, and that's probable that it would stay a single unit dwelling. Whereas if that wasn't under development agreement, there are more options in the land use by law. However, it is already covered under the development agreement, so those restrictions are in place whether or not the development, or I guess whether or not it was sold to someone else, and it was still under the development agreement.
If it reversed back to 102 and 14 hurdle, they are entitled to 30 lots, 30 units?
Based on the preliminary subdivision that staff has seen, it will probably be around 30 units, based on the acres that are left.
Is that including bonus density?
That is, yeah.
So, without that bonus density, it would be less than that?
Yes, they have intended to do the affordable housing bonus with the previous development agreement, so I would assume that they would still do it. But that's what would get them to that 30 units.
But to make it clear, that 30 lots include the density bonus that we're allowing them under the agreement that we've signed with them?
That's right.
Which moves them up to 35?
That's right.
Yeah, Mackenzie, under the DA right now, 108 is part of a comprehensive residential development, where you're having 34 units in one building, and then this particular structure would remain as one unit, and it would be restricted under that DA. If it's, so if it stays that way, it's going to be, and we allow the text change, 108 remains under the development agreement, and it stays as a single unit, with some smaller options for perhaps home-based business, that type of thing in there, but it's in a commercial zone.
That's right.
So, in the commercial zone, we don't allow single unit dwellings if it were new, right? Because the intent is to kind of phase that out.
Exactly, so it's illegal non-conforming use, as it is as a single unit dwelling.
Yeah, yeah. But this would kind of cast that in stone. So, the future owner of 108 would be limited to that particular use. And the only way to change that would be to, 108 could come and ask for a substantial amendment to the DA perhaps, or something to remove themselves from it, and council could consider it at that time?
There's no partial discharge clause in the development agreement. So, that wouldn't really be an option. There would, I guess, be the option for the property owners to work together and amend the development agreement. But it would be the case that if 34 units were to be built, that's, and then they subdivided, it wouldn't, it would be over that limit of the units permitted. So, that would be more difficult.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is what's being proposed under this scenario, except for you're going to keep it as a single unit.
Right, yeah, yeah. Or that's the probable option, unless the property owner of the 34 units decided to do, not actually 34, if they decide to do a few less.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? I know, did you have a question?
Well, so there is no way to separate this and discharge a portion of the DA on that?
That's right.
It's just not?
Yeah, it's not written into this development agreement.
I have a number of things that are kind of concerning me with this. And to be clear, not with the project, like the project's great. But I'm uncomfortable with just going to a text amendment, because I feel this is a substantial amendment. The reason is that had the applicant come and said, "On these two lots, can I do these 34 units?", the answer was no. Essentially, what's being asked for is, "Can I do 34 units on these two lots?". And the way I see it, and I'm not using the right terminology or anything, but basically, taking virtual square footage from another parcel that someone else may own, using that square footage to enhance the square footage of the two lots in order to give them enough space for the 34 units. But I just keep going back to the original, which is, "On the two lots, can I have 34 units?", the answer is no. And that's what's really being asked now. So, to me, there's a whole, it's like a cascading effect of consequences for, if we just do a text amendment, I need to know, have we ever, 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 in our history, said no to a developer who's asked for a certain number of units, and we said no because you don't have enough square footage on the property? Because if we did, then if I were that developer, I'd be coming back to the town saying, "How come they got this and I didn't?". So, I know that the legal opinion was either, but you know, with something like that considered. We've got a lot of development going on right now. I don't know if we've ever said no to somebody because of the size of their lot. I'd be worried about in the future, and this is the example you gave, of someone wanting to do something on their property, not having enough square footage. So, they go to their neighbors and, you know, "I'll give you a thousand bucks if I can put a little bit of your square, your property in my development agreement, and a little bit of yours on my development agreement, make my lot seem bigger, so I can have a larger footprint", even though they don't really own the property. So, I'm concerned with all those things. But through all of that, I'm still left with, council agreed to these terms in the development agreement in December. We're now in August, and I know things take time to line up. But what council said was, "Three lots become one lot", that's the terms that we agreed to. So, coming back to me, changing the terms is, you're changing the agreement. And if you're changing the agreement, that's, to me, a substantial change. That's where I'm left, and I haven't read or heard anything yet that makes me feel like all those boxes of, "Oh, I'm okay now" can be checked.
So, as an impartial party to all this, just providing information, I'll address a few of the things. So, we wouldn't be able to go back and know if we said no to any developer in the past, because there would just be, we wouldn't have that information unfortunately. And this is a different situation, but there are some situations where certain lots end up having more density than they would normally be permitted in a development agreement, or sorry, by the land use by law. For example, a large master-planned community, they might have this whole area and have a density limit, but then they can further subdivide, and they might end up having a multi-unit residential building that is on a lot that is smaller than it normally would be, had they not gone through a development agreement. So, situations like that do exist, but it's a little bit of a different situation. And although this would be very based on every, like very case by case, there are subdivision rules as well. So, this property could go through the subdivision by law and be permitted to subdivide into two, whereas, for example, if someone had a lot and then they wanted to take something from one neighbor and then from another neighbor as well, they could consolidate, but I guess just subdividing them individually, they wouldn't be able to do again, because there's rules about minimum lot areas and stuff. They could always, I guess, give it back. But yeah, there's certain rules around that.
Other questions?
Substantive amendment would take approximately six months. Is that a realistic timeline? Why so long, given that all we're doing is cutting a chunk away, so to speak?
Mostly just like legislative. So, it might not be that long. I put that as more of a maximum, because normally, we say eight to 12 months for a development agreement. But a lot of that is going back and forth with the developer at the beginning to just make sure everything is following policy and making sure we have everything and traffic studies and stuff like that. So, a lot of the work has already been done. So, I would say it would probably be less than that. I don't know how long it would take for them to update any of their plans. I don't know how impactful that would be, so that might take a little bit. And then we just have to go through bringing it to council, public participation, first reading, public hearing. And there's newspaper requirements for the public processes as well, and then an appeal period at the end. So, just all of that in total ends up taking a couple of months, plus that little bit of extra time for staff to work, but.
Okay. Thanks for asking my question, yes, Councilor Thorburn?
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I was just curious as to why the property, the single unit, is on the market for sale if we're in the process of negotiating this, like for approval. To me, it looks like, you know, if we're trying to make a decision here and it's on the market, it just, I'm unsure of why that is.
So, the applicant is here, I don't know how we want to handle that, if they want to come down?
If you're comfortable coming down, that'd be great, yeah.
You can take my slot.
Good evening. If I could, just a couple of things before I address the specific question. Just wanted to review sort of our intent behind the application of the development agreement, all those sort of things. We explicitly were trying to be as of right with our application of the development and the concept for the project. Early on, and the reason why 108 is still there and was being preserved was because we thought it was in the public interest to preserve that, both as housing that was there today, but also with regards to the streetscape and long-term, that that would work. Our initial plan, when we acquired the property, was that we would tear it down and just build a 35-unit building. So, it's a little ironic that we find ourselves now with a bit of a schedule and procedural challenge, where we were trying to do what we thought was in the public interest for the town. The way we look at it is, we only applied for the as of right density for the consolidated sites. We were trying to preserve the existing housing stock that was there, because we thought it was in the public interest. We've elected to go forward with the affordable housing component, because again, we thought it was in the public interest and supported the overall policies for the town. So, I can, but I can also, putting myself in your seats, wonder about the procedural nature of it. Really, the intent here is not to be trying to leverage anything other than the as of right density for the overall project. And the only reason that the parcel went on the market was before we realized that this clause was, was an impediment we weren't aware of. Because early on in the process, we had talked about that. We had defined what the minimum lot size would be for that 108 to remain as a separate parcel. The reality is, if we were to go forward with the DA the way it is right now, we wouldn't be able to get financing for the new build with a single-family home as part of that parcel. It would also cause significant problems from an insurance and operational perspective, just because they're two different asset classes. Again, this was all with the intention of doing the right thing for the town. So, the reality for us would be, not to preclude your decision here, but going back for substantive amendment really would mean a delay of probably up to a year construction-wise. And it might actually have the, I presume, the unintended consequence of us looking at demolishing 108 and just doing a single build with the permitted density on the site. That's not in any way a threat, it's just that might actually be the outcome, because it might be the path of least resistance to be able to proceed with the project. Again, stating it for context, not saying anything like that. What we're trying to do is build a good project in Bridgewater, provide additional housing, some of which would be designated as affordable. And we were trying to do so aligned with all the policies as we understood them. And it really is just a procedural.
I'm going to call them discommunication?
That we uncovered with staff, and they've been working with us to try and define a path forward. So, if the listing has caused any concern, and it was unintended, it would not have to be a fast or sneaky thing to do. And we've actually had some interest from a variety of parties that were looking at staff accommodations, other things that would assist with housing in the community more broadly. So, happy to take any other questions. Hopefully, that addressed the context of the issue. But if anyone has any further questions for me, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions for the developer? Councilor Thorburn?
How much square footage of 108 Aberdeen would be required if that was resurfaced and added to 102 and 14 hurdle drive to give you the necessary footage, to build those extra four lots?
So, I think.
Can we take a piece off of 108 and add it to 102 and 14 and allow the building to go through?
108 has to, by your bylaw, be at least 7,000 square feet. That's the minimum lot size. Again, so it was subdivided notionally as something greater than that, again, to comply with the requirements. But by the bylaw, and I haven't actually even done the math, it would be something less than 34 units, somewhere between 30 and 34 units. So, the net effect would be a loss of a number of units in the project, if we keep 108 there, versus the DA as it stands right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would have the ability to apply for demolition permit. That would be subject to.
So.
Yes, please.
So, that's another thing, is that it would, the collective development is also wording in the development agreement. So, not only does it have to be on a single lot right now, it also has to actually be more than one building. That's what collective residential is, that's what Tammy was addressing before. So, that's one of the reasons that there's, like, you can't do certain commercial uses, because there needs to be a residential component in the second building.
So, I guess based on that, it would look, in any event, it would be a reduced number of units, even if we had looked at demolishing.
Would that be considered a substantial amendment, Mackenzie, to remove that second building?
It would be pretty much the same as this. So, it's in the exact same clause as on a, as on a single lot. So, it would be the, I would say, the exact same situation. Similarly, the same impact as removing on a single lot. Yeah.
Yes, sorry, Councilor Thorburn?
I will say, I understand all the concerns that have been voiced. But ultimately, I think that removing "on a single lot" in this agreement, it doesn't, ultimately doesn't really change what a short time ago, council thought was a great idea, the community thought was a great idea, developer was on board. I mean, I think I would ultimately be in favor of just removing that and let the project go forward.
Are there questions or?
Yeah.
I do have one more question. I'm just not, I guess I'm not, I'll say, I can't really understand how there's nothing we could do in the future with any sort of town legislation that would allow any, allow a little more flexibility with that second building?
With that second lot?
Yeah.
Because the development agreement right now, it's a collective. So, the development agreement has to apply to that in order to meet the density requirements. So, it, 34 units or 35 units is what's allowed. So, unless the second building's smaller and you could add more units to that other building, you're somewhat limited in what can be done with it.
I guess, but if we were to allow more units in the future?
It's still by DA, so, yeah. You would have to look at the relevance of the DA if zoning changes. So, sometimes you change zoning on a lot or in an area, and the reasons for getting a DA 10 years ago might no longer exist. So, you may just discharge it. And then the zone, it reverts to the zoning that's kind of there. So, things like that could happen in the future, I'm not too sure. But right now, like the way it is now, it has to stay as a residential unit. And assuming that it makes more sense to do 34 units in one building as opposed to 32 and more in the second, it's going to be a single unit dwelling.
It's not an easy one.
Mackenzie, so can you help me again, just so I'm clear? So, 108 sells to a third party, they can or cannot apply for a new DA on that pri-
party. They can or cannot apply for a new DA on that property? Or, like, what are the options there? Or are they hamstrung forever?
Yeah. So as it stands right now, since the development agreement is for that whole area, it would be on both lots. Even if it was subdivided and sold, it would still apply to both of those lots. So they would be restricted by the development agreement as is the larger lot.
Could they collectively apply for an amendment to the DA at some point in time in the future?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess, I wouldn't necessarily know what that would look like.
We don't have provision for partial discharge in the DA.
You can't just discharge the.
You can discharge a development agreement if the reasons for it are no longer exist. So you may at some point want to go and do, do something like that if you're not concerned. Development agreements include a number of things in them, right? So that you can ensure that those continue with the development if you no longer have those concerns. But that, that's probably going to be a ways out, right, before you would even be in a position to even think about discharging that DA?
Well, I'm just thinking if that, when the building's complete, fast forward a few years, building's complete, let's say 34 units, it's, it's operating as it's supposed to.
Then the zoning would revert underneath of it, and you could have nonconforming, or it could, it won't comply with the zoning.
Yeah. So you couldn't, you couldn't discharge a development agreement if it was, the use wasn't permitted in the land use by law, if we were to totally change our zoning density.
So in this case, you can't really discharge it then?
No, we don't have provision for partial discharge.
Right. So you are, you are literally hamstringing 108 forever, ever.
With a different owner.
Right. So that.
And 108 would have to be commercial.
And 108, the, under the DA, it has to stay residential. Can you have a commercial component?
So it can't have a commercial component under the DA because it has to be that collective residential. So there needs to be some residential in that building. And since it is currently a legal nonconforming use, they can't add a use, even if it's permitted by DA, like commercial, because it's already nonconforming since single-unit dwellings are not currently permitted in that zone.
So no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm into flow on that file. Obviously, that whole corridor is becoming a commercial corridor, and it's going to just, yeah.
It's, it's, for me, this is tough because obviously, your proposal's great, and, and we need more units. We need more affordable units. We want as many as we could built. I just, I'm, I'm struggling with it for the reasons I mentioned. I'm worried that in the past, we've said no to somebody. I'm worried about a little bit of a precedent that it may set going forward, including the fact that what, what I think is a, is a substantial amendment can be just turned into a text amendment. So I'm, I, I've been very vocal about struggling with our, our not substantive amendments, like removing windows from apartment buildings before they're finished development. I won't point in the direction of the one that I'm talking about, but it was not a substantive amendment when I thought it should have been. So I'm, I'm always confused by what is substantive and what is not.
This is a timing, timing thing. The only reason the text amendment is even able to be considered is because the DA has not been executed or registered. If it had been executed and registered, we wouldn't even be having this debate. It would be a substantive amendment.
It's sitting on my desk, waiting for this from me. Which, you're just pointing all these things out and raising more concerns for me, which is, to my, I was thinking about this while I was driving back to city today. Like, I get that it wasn't signed, but to me, when council makes its motion and it agrees to those terms, I, again, I know it's not signed, but we have said this is what we want. So it's basically, you know, it says it would be signed by the chief administrative officer and the mayor, but essentially, council has just signed it. So I know the developer has to sign it first, and I, I'm not saying that you sat on it for any, I know it's just.
Only at the best of staff.
There's just a lot of subdivision issues going on that prolonged it.
We're just trying to build a building.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. I'm just, I, I am, I always want to make sure that we're applying everything equally to everyone so that when it's, especially zoning, especially those development agreement rules, that they're, everyone is getting the same treatment. And I, I'm concerned that what is a substantive amendment is like a text amendment is, text change and substantive amendment are two different things. I get the end result is going to be the same. And I am concerned about what this leaves 108 Aberdeen as. So I'm just, my head's kind of spinning with what, where I'm at with this one. I don't know if anyone has more questions. Councilor Donald?
Just maybe a comment, if it helps anyone or leads anyone anywhere, because I don't think it's helping me much. But I'm glad that we can look at these on a case-by-case basis so that we can look at what is in the best interest of the community as a whole. More units in this community is, is obviously a priority right now. However, if those few extra units tie up an entire lot, that could, you know, who knows what that could be in the future, then, you know, I don't know that that is in the best interest of the community as a whole for a few, the difference of a few units. And I know the difference of a few units can be the difference between a project going ahead and not going ahead. But if we tie up that entire property, we could really be limiting the future of that, that entire property. So I'm, I'm really stuck on the long-term effect on 108 Aberdeen and what, what's going to come up down the road, you know, who's going to come to council and say, you know, I've got this property and I can't do anything with it in the middle of a commercial area or in, you know, a corridor or something. So what, I'm looking for the best interest of the community. Units is, is a high priority, but tying up an entire property kind of seems to jump up above those few extra units for me.
Do you know how many square feet 108 Aberdeen is?
It's over the 7,000 square feet notionally, so that we would be compliant with the bylaw. I can't remember what it was, 7,000.
Okay. So there's not enough left over to then carve that down a little bit? And we don't have any lots under 7,000 square feet in the town?
Uh, there might be, but they would have been made before the current land use by law.
Okay. Yeah. So.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Totally out of line here. Is the concern that 108 couldn't be converted to commercial down the road to be compliant with the rest of the.
I think there's a, there's a few concerns. So, so the first concern I always have is that someone buys it, real estate agent doesn't tell them there's a DA on it. And I know that our, our response would be, you should do your due diligence. But I, I'm personally not a fan of a development agreement from one owner on a property from another owner. So I think that was one of the concerns that we raised before. The other is, yeah, like it always is going to have to be a house.
Yeah. Our, it's, I wasn't thinking that that was the concern. We weren't thinking that was the concern. We were thinking the residential was the priority and that the conversion to commercial was a lesser concern from the community perspective.
So we've seen that section of the street move towards commercial and.
We thought that the residential unit would trump that at the moment.
Well, and that to Councilor McDonald's point, I guess that's, that's the balance we're trying to find, right? Is that we, we do need more residential, but by doing this for one lot, we're kind of doing this for the other lot, right? So if, if, for example, we said no, and you went with 30 units in a substantive amendment and, and kind of 108 Aberdeen was not part of the development agreement, then 108 could have more, 11, which actually gets us more units. So.
Although 108 at that size, I don't think 11 would ever be feasible on that size.
I think that's.
We did the calculations, so 11 would be feasible, but not in that building. It would have, it would be.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, we understand that. So.
7,000 square feet, no, we're not.
I think, I think I did the calculations to figure that out.
You interested in building 11 units on that?
That's also based on like a very preliminary subdivision.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have thought that that was possible.
Think of the opportunities.
Because of the affordable housing.
You can tear down that house and put a lot.
So it's eight plus three affordable. Okay.
Yeah. This is getting better all the time.
I don't, I don't know how you do parking. It would be the issue with your parking requirement. So I, while it might work for a square footage for the units, it wouldn't.
The site might not.
And I hate to design for parking, trust me, but you do everything about it.
Yeah.
I, I don't think you would ever get that kind of yield off of seven or 8,000 square feet, or be happy with what came before you at that number.
Are there questions or comments? Councilor Thorburn?
I just don't like tying up 108 Aberdeen for somebody else to deal with. I think we was upfront and honest. And I'm in the camp where if we're only going to use two lots, it should go back to the 30 lots, including bonus density. And 108 Aberdeen would, could be then sold as a lot with no restrictions, and they could develop it as preferred.
Councilor Caldwell, did you have a?
I was just going to clarify. So the developer could come back to us and say, we'd just like to demolish that. Perhaps.
Apparently they can't because it has to be the second building with residential in it.
So we cannot.
Or change to the DA, which so would have to be a substantive amendment.
So it would have, so unlike this, that would have to be a substantive amendment?
Well, because it would change, I think, the planning analysis that would go behind it. Whereas this doesn't change, this text amendment doesn't change the planning analysis. The traffic does, nothing changes. That would be perhaps a bit different, like in terms of the site planning and landscaping plans and stuff like that. You.
So this is where I get confused, that, that is a substantive amendment.
Like demolition and.
But carving off the piece on an entire lot with a building on it is, can be a text amendment.
I would say they're the same. It's, again, the timing. So both of those are included in the substantive clause. It's up to 35 units as a collective development on a single lot. So both of those key parts exist in the same clause. So I think we would come back with a very similar situation, say that was the request at this point.
Then that could be the text amendment?
This would be the exact same situation.
You think that would be a text amendment then?
Uh, I guess, based on how we are approaching this, we couldn't, if the, if the DA was registered, we couldn't do a, a text amendment later. But had this situation right now been about collective residential, it's kind of the same thing. Like there, that, that clause, collective residential and on a single lot are really addressing the same point.
So you mean tear down 108 and just build one building?
So, so I'm saying, so I'm clear. Right now, like if we, if the developer said, I'd like to tear it down, at this moment, nothing's signed, we could decide, okay, go ahead and tear it down. We could allow that.
Nothing's signed right now.
But we couldn't allow it because council has already approved the development agreement that includes collective residential on a single lot. So.
You'd have to change the DA.
So we can't.
We can't. Okay.
Now I understand. So this is where we get confused. We can change some things, but we can't change other things.
It would be, you're, you're, the end result is you're saying there'd be one building on the lot and the house would be torn down, right? And it'd be 35 units in one building.
Yeah.
If that doesn't change your planning analysis in any way, it's just squeezing it in the footprint, then it would be, as you say, the same situation if the DA is not signing on that.
I would say it's more impactful because they would have to, and I don't, I don't want to necessarily say actually yes or no, because right now, if they subdivided, the development would look the exact same. 34 units in one lot, and the single-unit residential would still exist. But if they wanted to tear down the lot, that would actually be a bit different than what council originally agreed upon because that house would be gone and it would be one building. But it would be the same amount of units. So the impact of the units would be the same. So there's a variation, there's a difference, but it's kind of also the same.
To me, I, I'm, I'm not a planner, so I can't really, I see it as the opposite. I see that as less of an impact. And mostly because I go back to, if the developer had said, on these two lots, can we do 34 units? The answer was no. Like, it never would have come to council. Staff would have said, you can't do it. So their only option would have been to use that third lot, right?
Yeah.
So if you use the third lot and remove the, the building, then you still have the original thing which council wanted and agreed to, which was the 34-unit project.
But the DA did conform with three lots, right? It was only because we believed it was consistent with the policy of the town to preserve land use destruction. Trust me, I wish we had had this conversation eight months ago because we would have just designed it as a 35-year building. It would have been much simpler for us to do that. And if, again, this is perhaps not specific to this application, but just for context for you, for your consideration others, even the delay of a couple of months has probably been when you're in this construction window for placement of concrete, we hope to start this calendar year. That means we'll have to wait until going to a substantive amendment, talking about delay of a year. That means, you know, pushing up the availability. So these, and that's not, I'm not criticizing the analysis system you're taking of, but it does have, you know, trying to break forward this project. Collectively, all of us, I wish we had been able to have that conversation because we would have just proposed a 35-year building. Though we would rather proceed with something today rather than waiting here.
So, so I guess I'm stuck on what can be a text amendment, what.
So I think you're, you're struggling with a solid yes or no on the, the tear down and, and do one building because of the visual impact of that perhaps? And would your analysis change in any way?
Um, I don't think our analysis would change because we focus on the proposed development and our policies. There is policies talking about heritage preservation, historic preservation. So I guess that's one thing that we would look at and we would say, we would acknowledge that a building, an older building was going to be torn down. But then on the flip side, we would look at the policy that supports more units or the ability to have commercial in that area. Like, it's really hard to say.
So you would still have to do a report to council that kind of addressed the change anyway, and whether or not it would have implications for what you proposed as provisions of the DA. And if it didn't, and the DA wasn't executed, it could be treated in the same way as a text amendment, just so, so it's one little extra, I shouldn't say little, but it's one extra step to tell council you can consider it as a text amendment.
So I would say it's a unique situation. We, we normally wouldn't come forward with the, the option for a text amendment.
Yes.
But because this is a unique situation, staff looked at what options were available to, to bring forward to staff, and that's kind of where this all came about. And then we got the legal opinion to see if, if, if we could provide both of those options. So it is, it is a bit unique. We wouldn't normally come forward with that. But because there was a misunderstanding at the beginning from the developer's perspective, that's why staff was looking at different options.
I think for, for council too, they'd have to think about whether or not demolishing 108 Aberdeen Road would be of a community interest. Because that's part of the reason why you have your public hearing, is to make sure the public are aware of what's being proposed. So what they have thought differently about the development if 108 were proposed to be demolished and a 35-unit building was going up. So it might, it actually, as we talked through, it might not be as simple as.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree. I think, and that's where my perspective was at the beginning, is that I see that as a slightly larger, more impactful change. Because like I said before, the current text change, it looked, would look no different to the community. The same, the same 34-unit building and the single-unit one retained would still be there. But if the single unit were to be torn down, that's not what the public was aware would happen.
Yeah. So we probably, you know, thinking about it that way, then it would probably be a substantive change. That would have to go through that, the, the whole notice of intention, and then the public hearing, information session, hearing, and then council give final approval.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So a six-month process. And if you consider the request to subdivide off 108 as a substantive amendment, it'd have to go through the same process as well. But we're, legal counsel suggesting because it hasn't been signed, that one would be easier. You could look at it as a text amendment, but there, there are pros and cons to doing that as well. So it's not an easy, an easy decision to make.
Anyone else here struggle with the development agreement process? Sorry, Councilor Caldwell.
Excuse me. Can you remind me how many units we would be able to develop on 102 Aberdeen and 14 Hurdle if it was just the two lots?
Based on an, or like a preliminary subdivision, it looks like probably 30. We wouldn't know for sure, but that was based on a subdivision that showed 108 Aberdeen, a little bit smaller than it currently is, to maximize the unit count on, on 102, 102 and 14.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I would agree with Councilor Caldwell, what he mentioned earlier. And, you know, it's a very unique circumstance that we are in right now. And I think, you know, as far as 108 being listed for sale with the, you know, being hooked in with the development. hooked in with a, a development agreement on these two other lots, I mean, we, as a town council, I don't think should be held accountable for whoever is going to be buying 108 to ensure that they are aware of the, uh, development agreement. I mean, that's up to the, the seller and the buyer, I mean.
If it's registered, it continues to buy.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor with, uh, the text amendment.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm, I'm not of the opinion I'm worried about who's going to buy it and that they're going to be stuck. I'm just thinking that this is a corridor now being designed for commercial and you're going to have one single unit sort of plucked in the middle that cannot change in essence. And that's, that's my hiccup, I guess, for viewing the long-term view of this, I guess, for the town. Unless you can come to some agreement, but, you know, that's...
We would be open to, um, working with staff to put something supplementary in place for a, that would allow for that conversion if that was the public policy.
But the DA's going to specify residential?
Yeah, so the only options for that, which there are options, would be that it could be converted to two units, um, but that doesn't have any commercial. Or the single unit dwelling could be converted to three or four units, um, and there would be, there would have to be thirty percent of the ground floor used for a commercial purpose. Um, and that would, however, entail that there would have to be a reduction of units in the, um, larger building.
Yeah, I was thinking more of just a conversion of one residential unit in 108 to commercial at a later date if it was consistent with public policy. Something that would allow for that and, again, the density would be the same, still thirty-four if you go.
So to complicate that, unfortunately, it wouldn't be possible because, sorry, because the, because the current use is legal non-conforming, is a single unit dwelling, which is not currently permitted under that zone, but it existed before the zone was in place. You can't add even a permitted use to a legal non-conforming use, um, yeah, if it exists.
Can't add a text amendment to this DA for partial discharge and allow us to discharge one of, like, now that we're on this text amendment roll, like, I'm trying to find, trying to find a way to make this work. Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, once we do this and we agree to the text change, then going forward, we set a precedent where any developer coming into us can try and make a deal to get what they want, and we've already made one. We've set the bar that we would compromise our policies and land use bylaws for development. Because right now, on those two lots, it's thirty units. That's it. And once you do what wants, if it's for all the right reasons, then you're setting up the opportunity for another developer to come in and do the same thing, and another one to do the same thing, and then we lose control. And I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah, I, I just, I understand where you're coming from there, Councilor Thorburn.
I, I just feel that this is a little different situation. Uh, the developer's not coming to us beforehand, um, with the, uh, you know, request to parcel off that one lot and still go for thirty-four units or thirty-five units. This is after the fact and it's, I, I feel that it's unique. I, I know that it's a bit of a precedent, but, um, it's not the same situation where we would tell the developer, you got thirty units here on these two, uh, two lots on fourteen hurdle at 102 Aberdeen, and, uh, they're asking us to change to allow for thirty-four.
I understand, I totally don't agree with you, and I guess I can, based on the information that I have and I know, and my personality, what I'm, sorry.
My goodness, this is a real debate. Love it, I love it. No, it's, listen, everyone should be able to express their position openly and freely, so I respect everyone's position.
Another question, FMA. Um, Mackenzie, are we able to increase the number of units if we eliminate some parking?
No.
Can we do something similar to that on Queen, for Queen Street?
No, um, twenty-five Queen? That one? No, there was, um, they subdivided, um, won't get into that, but, um, the Affordable Housing Bonus allows you to get more units on individual lots, um, if they were separated. Um, so that's how that came about, but no, the, the zone outlines the, uh, density cap kind of no matter what in most zones, except for the C1 zone.
You may have answered this already and I apologize. So we do the text amendment, someone buys 108, they could come to you and request permission to demolish it and by site plan approval, build three or four units? And with thirty percent commercial?
If then the, um, current property owner of the larger lot reduced their amount of units. Because of that, the DA cap said at thirty-five for that whole area.
Councilor Thorburn?
I just wanted to do a scenario if I could, so just say the developer agrees, um, I don't have the wording here in front of me, but, um, the original approval for council was up to thirty-four units, so if, if, let's just say the developer agreed to up to thirty-two or, or it was changed, and then that would allow, um, 108, the single unit, um, I guess, you know, potentially to go up to three units, correct? Yeah?
Yeah, so it depends on if the developer would be willing to do that, but based on how the development agreement is written, it's up to thirty-five, so they could do less if they wanted to, and it doesn't matter where those units are in those buildings.
Okay. It's the combination of, right?
Yeah, so you're, you're suggesting that, that one building be capped at, say, thirty-two to enable the other building to have some additional...
So then it would give flexibility for the sale of 108 if they could be up to three residential?
That would be more of a substantive amendment, so we, I, I personally don't think it would be possible during this process to change that.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Can I, can I also just, this is me putting my, my explaining out, you, sorry, you, from a public policy perspective, you want the additional units in the new build, they'll be, you know, the highest performing, you know, sustainable structure. It's the place where you can have parking and other amenities and those sort of things. By trying to squeeze additional units onto the 108 lot, even if you change the, the square footage of it, it is on your busy street, it is, you know, you're better to have those units off of hurdle, I believe, and, uh, not impartially.
Other questions? I think we're out of questions. Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? And... Deputy Mayor?
I move the town council of the town of Bridgewater not accept the text change to development agreement and direct the owner to apply for substantive amendment to the development agreement.
Do we have a second here for that one, Councilor Thorburn? So everyone understands the motion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So, motion is carried. So it looks like a substantive amendment will be required. Okay, that was our one item on this agenda. If there's nothing else, we have a discussion session right after. Have a motion to adjourn. Please. Councilor Thorburn, signed by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned. Thank you.